It is no small feat to go two hours here. I mean, points to you guys for being here and sitting through this, two hours each night. Man, I'm just always surprised. And so, I just am. Praise the Lord for each and every one of you. And you know, I've said before, like, I'd just be doing this anyways. I love studying God's Word and just love studying it with other people. And so, yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you for being a part of this. You know, here we are, week 10. Week 10, and here we are in chapter 2, moving right along. And so... And you know, and we've talked about this, I think, a little bit last week. And you know, I just want to encourage everybody, and yeah, we're not moving as fast, because I definitely want to, you know, it's that leave no stone unturned approach. And so, feel free to ask those questions, because there's a lot of times that we just take stuff for granted. You know, or assume that everybody knows, or yeah, it's... We're dealing with documents that are 2,000 years old at newest, and language has changed over time, and wasn't even originally written in English. And so, different context, different, whole different world. And so, there's a lot to learn. There's a lot to learn. And so, we'll pray, and then we will jump into picking up with a couple of questions that we ended last week with. So, we'll go from there. All right? So, let's pray. Lord God, thank you. Thank you for this time, and thank you for your word. And this revelation that you have given to your people, to church, that 2,000 years later, we can read and be inspired by this, and even make those corrections in our lives. Father, I pray for your blessing on the study of your word tonight, that you be glorified, that your Spirit would cry out in our hearts, drawing us nearer to you, taking these words and helping us, reminding us, recalling in our spirit just where we need to change, where we need to repent, or what we need to do next. Father, I thank you for this, and I pray you be glorified during this time. In Jesus's name, amen. All right, so, we ended last week with a couple of questions. One of them was how many Jews were living in the first century, and more specifically, in some of these cities? Okay? Right? Yep, close enough. And I think there was a follow-up to that, like, how many synagogues? And let me tell you that there is not a lot of, like, hard evidence, because in some of these places, there were no synagogues found in some of the cities. And as far as numbers go, let me kind of read through this. According to Mumson, "In the first century CE, there were no less than 1 million Jews in Egypt, and a total of 8 million inhabitants. Of these 200,000 lived in Alexandria, whose population was 500,000." Harnack reckons that there were 1 million Jews in Syria at the time of Nero. I include these other numbers, because Asia is not specifically mentioned. So, just kind of as ballpark. 700,000 in Palestine, and he allows for an additional 1,500,000 in other places, thus estimating that there were in the first century, 4,200,000 Jews in the world. This estimate is probably excessive. So, this was according to the Jewish encyclopedia. "In the Barcockmo revolt of 132 to 135, 580,000 Jews were slain," according to Cassius Dio. So, that was in Palestine, where that revolt took place. "In Ephesus, what I could dig up, the Jewish population, it is known that there had been a substantial Jewish community in Asia Minor since at least the 5th century B.C. And when Paul visited Ephesus around 53 A.D., there was a Jewish community at Ephesus for over 300 years. But the exact date of the establishment of Jewish community in Ephesus is not known. Unfortunately, there is little inscriptional evidence for the Jewish community in the ancient city of Ephesus, but Ephesus is mentioned as having a synagogue in Acts 19." Synagogue, a synagogue has not been found in and/or around Ephesus, but there is a menorah carving on the step of the Celsus Library. Oh, did you guys see that? Oh, that's fantastic. That's great. So, so no actual synagogue had been found, but there was an engraving there, a carving. "In Smyrna," and we'll get to Smyrna hopefully tonight. "The city had a Jewish population as early as the time of the martyrdom of Polycarp in the 2nd century, although there is no further mention of Jews there until 1605, despite the fact that the neighboring towns had communities even before the Spanish expulsion." That's the Spanish Inquisition, where many of the Jews of Spain left. These were Sephardic Jews, and they ended up going to modern-day Turkey. So... "Pergamum. Josephus records a decree of the people of Pergamum pertaining to relations with the Jewish nation." This is recorded in Antiquities, Book 14. The document probably written during the reign of John Hercanus I refers to a decree of the Roman Senate renewing its alliance with the Jews. "Of particular interest are its concluding assurances of friendship between Pergamum and Hercanus, remembering that in the time of Abraham, who was the father of all Hebrews, our ancestors were their friends, as we find in the public records." That's kind of a fun little history note. "A similar claim describing the common ancestry of the Jews and Spartans is recorded elsewhere, and these should be understood as an accepted mode of Greek diplomatic correspondence. Relations between Judea and Pergamum are further cited by Josephus during the reign of Herod the Great, who included the city among those to which generous donations and gifts were offered. By the first century, a Jewish community existed in Pergamum, as Cicero refers to the confiscation of funds in Pergamum intended for the temple in Jerusalem." So, we don't have any hard numbers, but we have evidence of a Jewish presence in these cities. So... Also, so that was the best I could find as far as 2,000-year-old, like, Jewish population in some of these places. And it really does just come down to a synagogue. I'm trying to remember. I think it takes five, either five or nine Jewish males and their families to constitute, to create a synagogue in a city. That's why at Philippi, it mentions as a place of prayer. There were not enough Jewish males to actually have a synagogue, and so, they would leave the city to go by the river for, as a place of prayer. That was a designated meeting spot for religious services. So, so we see, like, some of that evidence. So, there wouldn't have been a synagogue in Philippi until much later on, if there was one. But definitely during Paul's time, there was not. But we'll see that in other places, where there is much larger Jewish presence. So, now, the second question for last week, any follow-ups to Jewish population of the ancient world? Yes? Yes. So, the majority of the churches were probably Gentile, as opposed to being Jewish, early, like, at the writing of this, right? Well, yes and no. Throughout the Mediterranean, we're going to see Paul's ministry as following the idea that to the Jew first, then to the Gentile. And so, he's going to go in, and we have him meeting with Jews in each of the cities that he's recorded as going to. We don't have the same missionary journeys recorded for John or some of the others. There's a couple visits to cities, but not as extensive as John's. There we go. And so, but what we see from Paul's example is that he'll go to a synagogue, speak on Sabbath, and preaching Jesus, and anybody that's kind of curious, they'll either invite him back or remove him. And then, those that are curious will probably follow Paul out and be like, hey, tell us more. But what we see is, a lot of times, it's not just Jews, but it's many of the God-fears, the Gentile followers of Judaism, following Paul out and being like, hey, tell us more. So, what were these churches made up? You know, we don't have a lot of hard evidence for what they were. But we do have mentioned, especially in the next few churches, of a certain Jewish population, or those who say they are Jews but are not, or of the synagogue of Satan. So, we do have some of that language, and so, there must be something of a Jewish presence, or at least a group that was identifying as Jews. And so, and we'll get into some of that. But what we could easily assume is that there was probably a mixed group of Jew and Gentile. I think that's the safest thing to assume. And let's also remember that this is very, very early on. It's not like they just have a New Testament to preach out of. And so, that actually segues to our next question with, what were the new believers or Gentiles reading in the first century? So, we were talking about Acts 15, and the Jerusalem Council kind of issuing their edict, and sending out a letter to all these communities that were kind of, I mean, really stirred up by the Judaizers, saying, hey, wait a second. Congratulations, you believe Jesus is the Messiah, but you're not fully converted yet unless you go under the knife. And obviously, the Gentiles are pretty upset about this. At least, the guys are. And so, sorry. Should've had that nap this afternoon. And so, you know, they're upset about this. We're going to edit this after. And so, but, but as they are upset, like, Paul is going back to Jerusalem, and he's talking to them at the Jerusalem Council, saying, hey, apostles, those of you that walked with Jesus, where are we coming down on this? Because I've been preaching this, but this other group is preaching this. Who's right? And they talk about it, and James, that's when he speaks, like, hey, you don't have to be circumcised to be saved. And you know, and we have Galatians, and we have all these other writings that really, you know, match up with that nicely. And so, so the question is, though, like, how did they know what to believe? And how, you know, what were they talking about every week as they gathered together? Well, they would have had the Old Testament. And this kind of goes back to 2 Timothy 3:16 and 17, right? The scriptures that Paul's referring to was not the New Testament. He's talking about the Old Testament. Because that would have been the only thing that was really codified and used among all of the gathering, among all the churches. And who would have had those in their possession? It would have been the Jewish believers. And they would have been the ones grown, you know, grown up in the faith, the same faith as Jesus, right? And so, then they're passing these teachings along. They're walking these Gentile believers through the prophets, and through the Torah, and through the history of Israel. And then, they would have seen all of those things that were mentioned by the Jerusalem Council as, hey, here are the things you need to stay away from. No, you don't need to be circumcised, but here are some things that you definitely don't need, you know, you should not do, which all, as we talked about last time, had to do with the pagan culture around them, the pagan temples. And that would have been the stuff that the Gentiles would have grown up in, participated in from the time that they were young. And all of those things are mentioned in the Torah. And so, once again, just kind of bringing all of that in lockstep, everybody on the same page going forward, as a mixed group. So, yeah. Any other questions? Was oral tradition prevalent in the New Testament? Absolutely, absolutely. And actually, it's interesting, we talk about that, because we see Jesus confronting that in his ministry. Jesus never once preached against the law, but what he was completely cutting out was all of the traditions of the Pharisees. Everything that had built up over 1,500 years up until Jesus's time. And so, Jesus never once would have spoke against God's word, but all the traditions and all the teachings of the rabbis and everything, that's all fair game, because that's not God's word, right? And so, that is absolutely, so that would have been around at that time. How much of that would have been adopted into the early churches? I think that's a fascinating study in and of itself. I mean, especially as you fast-forward, like, 100 years or so, you're seeing some of the Greek philosophy that influenced a lot of the early Gentile believers. And so, what are we seeing? What are the influences, right? Because if you were to think about, think back over your lifetime, especially if you came from a different faith, if you came back from, came from a different faith, converted to Christianity, then how would you see things? You would have another lens, even in the background. Maybe if you heard certain words, or certain views, different things like that, it would always be there. And maybe, just maybe, it would influence how you saw certain things, especially if there wasn't already a commentary, or maybe a church stance on something. Does that make sense? So, yeah, I think early on, a lot of that oral tradition was present, but I don't want to say prevalent, because it's pretty quickly that the Gentiles begin to outnumber the Jews, the Jewish believers. So, yeah, great question.
Okay, would have had to...
How many people, or how, how much access did they have to their Bible?
Right.
There you go. And so, as far as copying goes, that was definitely done by the scribes, and that was a very, very strict process, where, I mean, it was 10 degrees of double-checking, counting letters and spaces. And if anything was wrong, if one yod was off, the whole manuscript was burned. What would have been days, months of work would have immediately been burnt, because it was an abomination. It was not the word of God, because it was, had something incorrect on it. And so, so, but by the first century, many of the synagog, all the synagogues would have had at least a Torah scroll, and if not, also a scroll of the prophets as well. But many of the larger ones would have had, you know, scrolls for the Torah, the prophets, and the writings. So, yeah, great question. It just wasn't something that everybody had at their home, right? I mean, really, you run out of things to pray about. Just praise the Lord for actually having this. I mean, whether it's on your phone, or, you know, physical copy, I mean, it's just amazing. I was talking to my son, he was asking a question about Catholicism and Protestant Christianity, you know, yesterday, and was just talking about, like, just how pivotal the printing press was. And, I mean, just getting Bibles in people's hands, and for them to read it in their own language, and how that changed everything. So, it's pretty exciting. Hey, that was our warm-up. 25 minutes in. All right. Okay. Well, I hope contextually, that was helpful. I mean, first century, that was a long time ago. And here we are in the 21st century, and so, there is a lot to discuss there. Now, just as I made mention before with the Jerusalem Council, we are still in verse 6 of chapter 2. And, but I do want to back up here and go ahead and read, finish this, start at verse 1 of chapter 2. "To the angel of the church in Ephesus, right? The one who holds the seven stars in his right hand, the one who walks among the seven golden lampstands, says this: 'I know your deeds, and your toil, and perseverance; and that you cannot tolerate evil men, and you put to test those who call themselves apostles, and they are not; and you found them to be false; and you have perseverance, and have endured for my name's sake, and have not grown weary; but I have this against you, that you have left your first love. Therefore, remember from where you have fallen, and repent, and do the deeds you did at first; or else, I am coming to you and will remove your lampstand out of its place unless you repent.' Yet this you do have, that you have, that you hate, the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. To him who overcomes, I will grant to eat of the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God.'" Hmm. Just when we read that, I mean, they get props, right? But then, there's something very seriously wrong. Do the deeds that you did at first. You have left your first love. And so, wow. But that is also framed by the fact that they're still vigilant in putting down evil, and those who are teaching evil, those who claim to be apostles. And I, just before we dive real deep into this, like, just kind of staying at the surface, man, I think that's something we can totally walk away with, right? Is, like, how vigilant are we about putting down evil, and avoiding sin, and everything else? But then, what are those deeds of love? What are we doing in blessing others and loving others as Christ loves us? Showing the love of Christ to others. So, I think there's this beautiful balance here that we can learn from the church of Ephesus, where, yeah, avoid sin, put down sin, do not condone sin, but we can still share the love of Christ with those around us. And I think that, I mean, probably living in a time where hearts are growing cold. And that is something that we have to fight against. And to really work to show the love of Christ to those around us. So, as we jump into the, talk about the Nicolaitans again, just want to present that as just a point of balance, so that we get, just not get caught up with this. All right, so, verse 6, I think I had covered just a little bit last time. I began with the mention of eating food sacrificed to idols, and committing sexual immorality in the letter to Thyatira, right? That was one of the first references, that it just kind of helps, because these Nicolaitans get around, right? So, they're not just mentioned in Ephesus, but we also have in the letter to Thyatira, as well as in the letter to Pergamum. So, the Nicolaitans. So, this is obviously a heretical group. And in the letter to Pergamum, they're going to be associated or connected with the teaching of Balaam. And we'll, we'll get into the story of Balaam when we get to Pergamum. And so, all three of these churches, though, have been affected by the Nicolaitans. And that was Ephesus, Thyatira, and Pergamum. And so, what's basically assumed by scholars is that, like, with the eating food sacrificed to idols, the sexual immorality, this is directly going against the Jerusalem Council's wisdom, and as God directed them, hey, you need to avoid these things. So, the Nicolaitans, under a context, a guise of liberty in Christ, are continuing to do these things. So, they've compromised with pagan society. Well, we're, I'll get there. I'll get there. Eusebius has a thought on that. So, "Early tradition identifies the Nicolaitans with Nicolus, the proselyte of Antioch, who was appointed one of the first seven deacons in the church." And this is recorded in Acts, chapter 6, verse 5. "I will say, though, there's no particular reason, however, why this connection needs to be made. If Eusebius is correct that the sect lasted only a very short time, it may be that the only information the patristic writers had was the book of Revelation itself." Might need to think about that one for a second. So, the only way that maybe some of these people had heard of the Nicolaitans was from the letter being circulated. How would you like to be that person that maybe didn't identify as a Nicolaitan, but then, all of a sudden, the description comes out, and you're like, oh, oh, I just taught that last week? So, I mean, but like, that's, that's us thinking, like, contextually, right? Like, rewind 2,000 years, and this letter shows up. It's a prophecy from Jesus, and we're just, what? And all of a sudden, there's some very clear things that need to be changed. Wow, man. So, so the early tradition with the Nicolaitans being connected with Nicolus of Antioch, you know, it's, it's loose, it's probably not something to really nail down to somebody. I always go back to the Nicco being, you know, ruler or victor of, and then Laeti, the people, rule of the people. So, it, it could be something where it was just maybe the majority, the Gentiles formed a majority within the church, and they decided, this is okay. Hey, we all grew up this way, right? Maybe they all attended, you know, went to the temple of Apollos. Went to elementary school there. I don't know. And so, and so, they all had a common background and a common frame of reference. And they were like, you know what? I've been eating the meat bought at the temple to Apollos, like, all my life. It's never hurt me once. We should continue buying the meat there. That should be fine. And, you know, the sexual immorality in reference to temple prostitutes. Well, those are, that's a fine upstanding position in society. There's nothing wrong with that. Why can't we associate with them? And so, all of a sudden, you have some very serious issues, contrary to the way of Christ, fully embedded in the church, from maybe a majority. So, what happens with that? So, how did they know what sexual immorality was before Paul was even writing to them, or even just upon receiving this letter? Right, sure. And so, I think with the idea, how would they have defined sexual immorality at this time? So, I think a baseline understanding would have been from the Torah. So, from the first five books, as God lays out his intention, his instructions for sexuality, human sexuality, that would have provided a baseline among the Jewish believing population. And for all the God-fears who had been attending synagogue, hearing these same teachings, they probably would have understood that, if not had wholesale adopted that anyways, right? For everybody else that was coming in, they would have continually heard that teaching. Now, I will say, when Paul is writing his letters, he is writing very, very specifically into certain contexts, like 1 and 2 Corinthians. What you have there, sexual immorality, there's two words, porneo and maquia. And what those are is participation in anything, like, sexually immoral. And then, the other, maquia, is watching. So, a lot of times, at pagan temples, there was auditorium-style seating to watch performances. Yep. And so, yeah, sexual ethic would have been anchored in the Torah itself. Yep, absolutely. Great questions. I mean, that's, because, yeah, if you have a bunch of Gentiles coming into this, like, how are they going to learn? And especially if you had the understanding, well, they didn't have a Bible. It wasn't written yet. Parts of it, you know, from, of the New Testament would have been in circulation. There would have been, you know, fragments from, as, you know, apostles were taking notes, or whatever. But the Old Testament was absolutely a core part of teaching. And that's exactly what Paul's talking about. That's exactly what everybody was understanding. So, yeah, great question. So, going to talk about Paul with 1 Corinthians, because Paul has a lot to say about food sacrificed to idols. So, the issue Paul addresses in 1 Corinthians in chapters 8 through 10 involves three different types of situations. One, eating food sacrificed to an idol at the temple of an idol. And so, that's chapter 8, verses 7 through 13, and chapter 10, verses 1 through 22. So, let's go ahead and just go to 1 Corinthians. So let's go ahead and just go to first Corinthians. And I just want to read this because it's interesting where we have two different perspectives. And Paul being in the midst of ministry is kind of giving a, some practical advice to those he's around, right? So first Corinthians, chapter eight, seven through 13. However, not all men have this knowledge, but some, being accustomed to the idol until now, eat food as if it were sacrificed to an idol. And their conscious being weak is defiled. So they were eating food sacrificed to an idol and their conscience is getting to them. Like, oh, this is wrong. I shouldn't do this. But food will not commend us to God. We are neither the worse if we do not eat, nor the better if we do eat. But take care that this liberty of yours does not somehow become a stumbling block to the weak. For if someone sees you who have knowledge dining in an idol's temple, will not his conscience, if he is weak, be strengthened to eat things sacrificed to idols? For through your knowledge, he who is weak is ruined, the brother for whose sake Christ died. And so by sinning against the brethren and wounding their conscience when it is weak, you sin against Christ. Therefore, if food causes my brother to stumble, I will never eat meat again, so that I will not cause my brother to stumble. So there's a little bit of back and forth there. But kind of understanding what Paul's saying, basically, don't cause somebody else to stumble, right? And he recognized, like, mind you, the, the local butcher shop was the local pagan temple. Like, that is the ancient context for this, right? So, so when he's saying, don't eat meat sacrificed to an idol, you are definitely going to have to work hard to go out of your way to buy meat. So, not even repeating that one. And so, but, you know, it is, it's important for us to understand how, like, this, this is a hurdle. This makes things a little bit more difficult. And so Paul here is giving some practical advice. But what we have here in Revelation, from Jesus himself, is super clear. That this is not, that we should not be eating meat sacrificed to an idol. And I don't want to take that as a juxtaposition. I think what Paul was saying was in a certain context, and especially for people, for the Corinthian church, that was happening to adjust and was wrestling with this. And so he's kind of giving that in this, in the moment, in that situation. But I think 2,000 years later, as the church, if we were to take this as a rule for the church, I don't know about you, but I think what we see is pretty clear in Revelation. It's something to avoid. It's just my thoughts on that. But I think it's still fascinating. So the second thing that, the three different types of situations, the second one, eating food of unknown history that is bought in the market. And then he makes reference to this in chapter 10, verses 23 through 27 of first Corinthians. All things are lawful, but not all things are profitable. All things are lawful, but not all things edify. Let no one seek his own good but that of his neighbor. Eat anything that is sold in the meat market without asking questions for conscience' sake. For the earth is the Lord's and all it contains. If one of the unbelievers invites you and you want to go, eat anything that is set before you without asking questions for conscience' sake. But if anyone says to you, this is meat sacrificed to idols, do not eat it, for the sake of the one who informed you and for conscience' sake. I mean, not your own conscience, but the other man's. For why is my freedom judged by another's conscience? If I partake with thankfulness, why am I slandered concerning that for which I give thanks? So definitely some, some wisdom from Paul in those situations. And definitely concerned about the conscience, right? Where does that conviction come from? The third type is eating food in the private homes of believers. And that's why I continued reading as I did. So, so eating food sacrificed to an idol at the temple of an idol. And eating food of unknown history that is bought in the market. And then third, eating food in the private homes of believers. Any questions on that? I know a lot of time, this is so far removed even from our current context, but there are cultures, I mean, whether you be in India, you know, different places, that, that this is still a thing. So, okay? All right. So you can go to Kroger with a clear conscience. All right, verse seven. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. To him who overcomes, I will grant to eat of the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God. Now, we just got done talking about the Nicolaitans. We just got done talking about how Jesus hates their deeds, right? The sexual immorality, the food sacrificed to idols, as mentioned in Pergamum, the letter to Pergamum. And so here, Jesus is, it's a call to listen, a call to overcome. And what happens is if they overcome, he's going to grant them the privilege of eating from the tree of life, which is in the paradise of God. So the exhortation to hear what the Spirit says introduces a promise in the first three letters and follows a promise in the last four. There's no apparent reason for this variation in format. The Spirit, which speaks to the churches, is probably the prophetic spirit sent by Christ to illumine his followers, or Christ's own spirit. He promises the overcomer the privilege of eating from the tree of life in the paradise of God. Just as the opening description of Christ, in each case echoes the vision in chapter one, verses 13 through 16. So this, and many of the overcomers' promises, anticipate the eschatological visions later in the book. Okay, so basically, what we're reading here with the overcomers, the promise to the overcomers, are references to the end of Revelation. So where the tree of life, the paradise of God, those are mentioned later on. So basically, the first things that are mentioned are, go back to the description of Jesus, right? The speaker is identifying himself with the description that we see in chapter one. But then at the closing, for the overcomers, it references the end of Revelation. So nice little bookends there. So the overcomers in Revelation are not those who have conquered an earthly foe by force, but those who have remained faithful to Christ to the very end. The victory they achieve is analogous to the victory of Christ on the cross. So that was from Mounts. Genesis speaks of a tree of life in the garden of Eden, chapter two, verse nine. So let's go to the opposite end of the book. Genesis, chapter two, verse nine. Out of the ground, Yahweh Elohim, the Lord God, caused to grow every tree that is pleasing to the sight and good for food, the tree of life, also in the midst of the garden, and the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. So there, Genesis, chapter two, verse nine. So that following the sin of Adam and Eve was guarded by a flaming sword, lest they eat of its fruit and acquire immortality. So Genesis, chapter three, verses 22 through 24. Then the Lord God said, behold, the man has become like one of us, knowing good and evil. And now he might stretch out his hand and take also from the tree of life, and eat and live forever. Therefore, the Lord God sent him out from the garden of Eden to cultivate the ground from which he was taken. So he drove the man out, and at the east of the garden of Eden, he stationed the cherubim and the flaming sword, which turned every direction to guard the way to the tree of life. So a cherubim got placed there. Interesting. Let's see, it's appropriate that at the end of time, the faithful will be allowed access to the symbolic source of eternal life. In apocalyptic thought, the tree of life exists as a reward for the righteous following judgment. Proverbs, chapter three, verse 18, says that wisdom is a tree of life to those who embrace her. So wisdom personified. In Revelation 22, verse two, the tree of life produces its perennial fruit in the heavenly Jerusalem. So let's go to the other end of the Bible here. Revelation, chapter 22. I'll start at verse one. Then he showed me a river of the water of life, clear as crystal, coming from the throne of God and of the Lamb. In the middle of its stream, on either side of the river was the tree of life, bearing twelve kinds of fruit, yielding its fruit every month, and the leaves of the tree were for the healing of the nations. Verse three. There will no longer be any curse in the throne of God and of the Lamb will be in it, and his bond servants will serve him. They will see his face and his name will be on their foreheads. Okay, I better just stop reading. I'll just read the rest of the thing. It's so awesome. So, so we see the tree of life there in Revelation 22 as well. So paradise, so here's a little fun fact. Paradise was originally a Persian word for pleasure garden. And later Judaism, it was used to portray the abode of the righteous dead. So the paradise of God in Revelation symbolizes the eschatological state in which God and people are restored to the perfect fellowship, which existed before the entrance of sin into the world. So paradise can be translated as garden. All right, any questions? Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, okay. Are these literal locations? Are these actual locations here on earth or not? Or is this all symbolic? So I think the symbolism would be easily translatable, right? We would understand what that was, you know, eternal life, fellowship with God, everything that the symbolism of the garden, as we read that narrative, was supposed to be, right? And we see the garden as a separate place. And, you know, and Adam and Eve are removed from it. And then they're left in the earth. So where, if you're asking where I land on that, I'm just going to say I don't know. I mean, in all humility, I'm just gonna, after I die, I totally trust the Lord with whatever happens next, right? And if I end up right there in a garden and there's a tree and there's 12 kinds of fruit and, you know, I mean, that's, I love being outdoors. That is, that sounds awesome. So, but as, there's, there's so many things, there's so many details that really do lend to it being a physical and actual location. Especially in Genesis, where we have rivers described, right? And so it's like, the author knew where it was, but it was not accessible. And so then we bring that full circle by Revelation where, ah, now you have access to it. And even the description of, you know, what John is seeing was still something to behold. And it seemed like, oh, why, why would you go into the detail of like 12 kinds of fruit? And I know that can be symbolic easily. But why 12 kinds of fruit? And why are the leaves used for the healing of the nations? It's like, there's a plan for this, right? So the tree of life, the leaves are used for healing. And so it, there's like a practical element to that that looks like, oh, God has a plan for eternity and it's us living in bodies that maybe require that, yeah. And so it, I don't know, I get really excited looking at that. I mean, it's just, so that's a great question. And I will just, I will, that will be my first I don't know for the evening. Probably not the last, but, yeah, and I don't know. I, I think it's one of those that you want to believe that is absolutely just, it is an actual physical place and location and everything. But I don't think we're going to get disappointed if it's not. Because we'll be with the Lord, so. Right, we're talking about the, he who has an ear to hear, let him hear what the Spirit is saying to the churches. And so, yeah, and that it's, everybody has ears. But it's those who are willing to listen and receive the word that is being communicated. Absolutely. And the Spirit plays a large part in that. Absolutely. That's good. Any other question? Yep. Question on Zoom. Would the new earth be the new Eden? So it's interesting because we see in Isaiah 65, 66, that we do see the earth being remade. But then we also see a lot of city language as well. And we'll see that with the new Jerusalem coming down later on in Revelation. So it's interesting that we have a lot of new earth language that is environmental, that is, you know, very natural. But then we also see a city, the city language and everybody, you know, being in the light provided by Yahweh. And so it, it's, what is, if, if it was just symbolism, what is that communicating? That we're all together, that we're under the ruling, you know, the reign of Yahweh himself and the Messiah in their presence and in close proximity? But then everything else is as God originally intended it in the garden. So we can all live in the same city, but then go hiking anywhere we want and see amazing things. And so, yeah, I, I think a lot of that garden language is comparable to that. So, and I think that's exactly what Isaiah is, is, that has been revealed to Isaiah, is that garden language not just being a smaller location that people are banned from, but now it's not necessarily people being brought there, but it consuming the world. Because evil had been vanquished. And so, yeah, I, I mean, that's how awesome this is, right? That is the world to come, and that's what we should be looking forward to. I know we've been going through Philippians and we talk about, like, as, as excited as Paul is, as he's writing a letter, it's, the day of Christ is near, right? His return is, is coming soon. And how excited that is and how much it frames his life. We should be talking about this. We should absolutely, and, and whether, you know, you believe it's an actual physical place or it's symbolic, it's, that's awesome. Whichever side of the coin you're on, it's okay. It's not something to be divisive about, because we do have a lot of symbolic language in the Bible. That's okay. That's okay. Because we don't take the Bible literally, we take it literately. There's a big difference there. And so, so as we're talking about this, this is the stuff that, that when persecution comes, and especially for these believers in some of these cities, this is what they need to have in front of them. When they're facing being ostracized from their entire community, when they're facing prison, when they're, I mean, they see fellow brothers and sisters in Christ going and, and being martyred, they need to have like, man, just head into the garden. And close my eyes and open them to a tree of life. Right? And that's the hope that we should all have and really just be absolutely excited about it. And not think twice. And it doesn't just frame our big decisions or the moments where our life is on the line, but it should also frame the little decisions that we make. And the opportunities that, where we feel the Spirit tugging on our hearts. So, yeah, absolutely. Well, if you haven't read Isaiah 65, 66 lately, I would go read that. And then also, go ahead and skip to the end of Revelation, read that too. That's some fun homework. And for good measure, you can go back to first Corinthians 15 for the resurrection. There's just so much to be joyful about, like, There's just so much to be joyful about, like with our faith and, you know, yeah, we can lose sight of that. Now we are going to jump into Smyrna here and just to kind of preface this a little bit, a little bit about the city. This will be verses eight through 11. You know what? Let's go ahead. We'll read through eight through, read eight through 11 and then I'll go back and kind of give the background for Smyrna. And to the angel of the church in Smyrna write, the first and the last who is dead and has come to life says this, I know your tribulation and your poverty, but you are rich. And the blasphemy by those who say they are Jews and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan. Do not fear what you are about to suffer. Behold, the devil is about to cast some of you into prison so that you will be tested and you will have tribulation for 10 days. Be faithful until death and I will give you the crown of life. He who has an ear, let him hear what the spirit says to the churches. He who overcomes will not be hurt by the second death. All right. Start unpacking that one. And we're still in the letters. No, actually, yeah, all right. So Smyrna. The second letter is addressed to the church in Smyrna, which is modern day Izmir in Turkey. Some of you have been there. The only one of the seven cities still in existence. Although the small town of Bergama still stands on the plain below the Acropolis of Pergamum. So Izmir is still the active city of Smyrna. Does everybody know what an Acropolis is? Okay, if you don't, Acropolis is, so in ancient times, they would build a city and usually it would be around or at the base of a hill and that is called the Acropolis. And basically that was a high place. Remember reading about high places in the Bible? So that would be their high place. So generally there would be a temple up there. But then that was also in times of war or siege, that was where everybody ran. They ran to the hills, right? And so they would go up there also. It would generally be a bank because that was the most secure site to keep all the gold, the wealth of the town. And so, which would also double with the temple as well. So, so that's an Acropolis. And so Bergama is there at the base of the Acropolis of Pergamum. So Christ reminds them that he is aware of their suffering, forewarns them of coming persecution and encourages them to remain faithful even to death. So an interesting connection, but the name Smyrna may also have been taken from the ancient Greek word for mir, for murder, sorry, murder. Which was, which was the chief export of the city in ancient times. And then murder has its association with embalming and death. So once again, just interesting connection with all of that. So Smyrna lay about 35 miles north of Ephesus on the east shore of the Aegean Sea. Its excellent harbor was sufficiently narrow at the mouth that it could be closed for protection in times of war. An important road extended eastward from Smyrna over which the produce of the rich valley of the Hermes moved. In export, Smyrna was second only to Ephesus. Smyrna was a proud and beautiful city. Three to 400 years after it had been destroyed by Alyates, king of Lydia, it was rebuilt in 290 B.C. by Lysimachus and Antigonus as a model city. It boasted a famous stadium, library and public theater, the largest in Asia, the public theater was. It claimed to be the birthplace of the great epic poet Homer. Not to be confused with the Simpsons. A famous thoroughfare called the Street of Gold curved around Mount Pegasus, which rose over 500 feet from the harbor, like a necklace on the statue of a goddess. At either end was a temple, one to a local variety of Sybil, known as Sybiline Mother, a patron divinity, and the other to Zeus. The Acropolis on Mount Pegasus was called the Crown or Garland of Smyrna. In New Testament times, the population may have been about 200,000. Coins describe the city as first of Asia in beauty and size. So first of Asia. Which means it's, it was the premier city. Smyrna sustained a special relationship to Rome in the imperial cult. So remember the imperial cult, that is the worship of the emperors. During the period when Rome was engaged in a struggle for supremacy against the Carthaginian empire, roughly 265 to 146 B.C., Smyrna had placed itself squarely on the side of the Romans and in 195 B.C., it became the first city in the ancient world to build a temple in honor of Dea Roma. Later in 23 B.C., Smyrna won permission over 10 other cities in Asia to build a temple to the emperor Tiberius. So remember, people didn't just, they didn't just build random temples to emperors. They actually had to have permission to do that because that was the emperor being associated with that city. So the city had to be worthy of that. And by, you know, they're, they would take bids, right? And so they would propose different projects and here's what we're gonna build for you. And whichever one the emperor liked the best, that one gets selected. So we have Smyrna winning permission for, from Emperor Tiberius to build a temple to him. And that's 23 B.C. So by the time of writing here, we're looking at 100, 100 years prior. This strong allegiance to Rome plus a large Jewish population that was actively hostile to the Christians made it exceptionally difficult to live as a Christian in Smyrna. The most famous martyrdom of the early church fathers was that of the elderly Polycarp, the 12th martyr in Smyrna, who upon his refusal to acknowledge Caesar as Lord was placed upon a pyre to be burned. So we do not know when the church was first founded at Smyrna, but it is reasonable to suppose that it could have been during the time Paul lived in Ephesus on his third missionary journey. Acts chapter 19, verse 26. From Ignatius's letter to Smyrna, early second century A.D., we learn that the church was already well organized with a bishop, Polycarp, with elders and deacons. Polycarp is said to have been John, the apostle John's disciple. So that could also lend itself to very quick establishment of a church. Yeah, probably about 50. Yeah. Now, mind you, like I would still hold out from Acts two, from Acts two with so many people, so many Jews in Jerusalem at the time of Pentecost, hearing the gospel preached from the apostles themselves, right? And so all those people, that was one of the pilgrimage feast of Israel. And so at the end of that feast, all the Jews are going home. And that's why that Acts two list of all those regions is super important. Because when you look at that, I mean, it's basically dotting around the Mediterranean on the south side as well as the north side. And so I, it's just, it's awesome to think that in the same year of Jesus's death and resurrection and ascension, the gospel is already going all over the world from 3,000 Jews who hear the apostles teaching and, you know, accept Jesus as their Lord and Savior. So that could happen real fast. So totally didn't repeat that question. Oh, man. All right. The question was, basically when would that church in Smyrna would have been established? Mid-century, 50 A.D. But then I just still want to keep Acts two in front of us. And so that would have been around 33 A.D. I'll get it one of these days. We're only 10 weeks in. All right. Any other questions? All right. Just a reminder, you know, we are, of the different ideas presented, when revelation is being recorded, you know, early date 70, late date, mid to late 80s, right? And so there's a little bit of a gap there, I mean, almost 20 years, but that's still about 20 years after what we would see the, the church established at the latest. So, absolutely. Yeah. All right. So verse eight, we'll jump into this. And to the angel of the church in Smyrna write, the first and the last who is dead and has come to life says this. So in the salutation of each of the seven letters, Christ identifies himself by means of some part of the description in the initial vision. Chapter one, verses 13 through 16. There's normally a certain appropriateness being between the identifying characteristic and the church that is addressed. The church at Smyrna was a persecuted church, so the letter comes from the sovereign one, the first and the last, who died and came to life again, as he was victorious over death, so they too can face martyrdom, knowing that faithfulness is rewarded with eternal life. So a lot of really just strong connections there and encouraging connections. Smyrna is one of only two churches, the other being Philadelphia with no weaknesses. It is telling that these two were also the least significant of the seven churches in terms of numbers and influence. Not of the city population, but of the church itself in that city. So the first and the last. Verse nine, I know your tribulation and your poverty, but you are rich. And the blasphemy by those who say they are Jews and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan. So harsh. This is also one of two letters with Pergamum next, without the formula, I know your good deeds. Instead, the divine knowledge of and empathy for their situation is described. So there are three things the exalted Christ knows, and that's their tribulation, their poverty and slander. And the presence of yore at the beginning draws all three together. So blasphemy, slander. The church at Smyrna is reminded that its afflictions and stark poverty have not gone unnoticed by the Lord. He is fully aware of the pressure brought upon the faithful. The linking of affliction and poverty suggests a close connection between the two. In an antagonistic environment, it would be difficult for the Christian to make a living and thus many were economically destitute. They may also have been the victims of mob violence and looting. Hebrews chapter 10, verse 34. Their poverty, however, was a material poverty. Spiritually, they were rich. We can contrast this with the Laodicean church, which claimed to be rich but was poor. Chapter three, verse 17. James wrote to a similar group indicating that God has chosen those who are poor in the eyes of the world to be rich in faith. James chapter two, verse five. And then also Matthew chapter six, verse 20, which I read this morning, and second Corinthians chapter six, verse 10. Christ is also aware of the slanderous accusations directed against the believers by the Jewish population at Smyrna. The martyrdom Polycarp, which we just talked about, documents his hostility most clearly. And it says, the multitude of heathen and Jews living in Smyrna cried out with uncontrollable wrath when Polycarp confessed to be, confessed that he was a Christian. And they burned him alive. Jewish hostility to Christians seems to have stemmed both from their conviction that to worship a Galilean peasant who had died a criminal's death would be blasphemy and the apparent success of the Christians in evangelizing God fears. And God fears was the name for Gentiles who are kind of following Judaism. So when they attended synagogue, they were the ones standing in the back. Antagonism against believers would lead Jews to become informers for the Roman overlords. In a city like Smyrna with its strong ties to Rome, it would be a fairly simple matter to incite the authorities to action. Especially if this was presenting any competition to the imperial cult. Not to mention the regular cultic practices within the Greek gods. Any questions on that? Okay. Those who say they are Jews and are not. So the Jews who blasphemed, however, were not real Jews. This should be taken in the sense of, and this is from Mounts, by the way, not that it's my own words, it's Mounts. This should be taken in the sense of Romans chapter two, verses 28 and 29, where Paul says that a man is not a Jew if he is only one outwardly, but a man is a Jew if he is one inwardly. Farther remarks, whereas the Ephesian angel is troubled by self-styled apostles, the Smyrnean is troubled by self-styled Israelites. Thought that was interesting. Like the Jews of John, chapter eight, verses 31 through 47, who claimed to be descendants of Abraham, they were instead of their father, the devil. The hostile Jews of Smyrna were in fact a synagogue of Satan. The latter term in Hebrew means adversary. So Satan means adversary. Its Greek equivalent means slander or false accuser. So definitely fits within the context of what we're reading. Regardless of their national descent, they had become by their bitter opposition to the church and its message, a synagogue carrying out the activities of God's supreme adversary, Satan. So definitely, definitely very strong language in this association. But in Smyrna, we definitely are seeing Jewish population leading the persecution of the church and stirring up the Gentile population against them as well. And because this is recorded, this is not to be taken in as anti-Semitic in any way and does not encourage violence against any of the Jewish population. Is there any other disclaimers I need to go along with that one? So, I mean, because like it's stuff like this that over church history has become, has been abused. So, but that is definitely not our intent here. But we do see Jesus calling this out and recognizing the plight of the Christians in Smyrna and what they were going through and what they were enduring. And these weren't just Gentile Christians, these were Jewish Christians as well. So let's remember that. Question? Sure. Why were the Jews the primary like persecutors of the church? And why wasn't it the, the Gentiles? Well, it will become the Gentiles a little bit later on. And we already see that in some of the epistles and in Acts, you know, like Paul in Ephesus. Right? And so that's an example. But what we have with Jewish persecution first is, like, remember Christianity came out of Judaism first. And really wasn't even a coming out of Judaism, it was a continu- And really, it wasn't even a coming out of Judaism, it was a continuation of Judaism. Because Jesus is Jewish. And as a Jewish rabbi, He's going along the countryside and teaching and preaching, and He's the Messiah. And so He's directing people to Himself, right? And so in all of this, in His messiahship, the Jews hold this to be blasphemous. For all the Jews that did not believe, they held this to be blasphemous. The whole idea of the Messiah coming and the way that He did, it was just all scandalous. And not to mention going to the cross, dying a criminal's death. Slandered, I mean scandalous and just blasphemous even, just to say that the Lord's Messiah, Yahweh's Messiah, would die in that way. Because their idea was that the Messiah was going to come and conquer the earth. And that all the Jews were going to be on His side. But this was completely just not what they wanted. And so the Jews are advocating for the crucifixion of Jesus. But this whole movement won't die. It won't stop, even when Jesus was crucified. Now there's a rumor going around that He came back to life. Now we got a bigger problem. And people are believing this. By the hundreds, now the thousands, and you know, and it just goes from there. And, yeah. And so, and then all these people are running around saying they watched Him go back up into heaven. And then 10 days after that, you have Pentecost. And so there at the temple, at least, I believe that that whole Peter sermon and what the apostles are saying, was at the temple in the synagogue, or in the open forum there of the temple, from Herod's extension. And so their thousands could have heard that sermon in their own languages. And where would all those people get baptized? Oh, there was, you know, mikvahs. They were baptistries, like, all over there because of ritual purity coming into the temple. So all they had to do was walk back out, get baptized in the name of Jesus, which nobody would have said Jesus, it would have been Yeshua. And so then they'd come back in and continue to worship the Lord. But as this is going on, there's a whole bunch of Jews that didn't believe, and they don't like this very much. Because you got a whole bunch of Jews claiming that this Jesus, this Galilean peasant prophet preacher was the Messiah, the Son of God. And then all these that didn't believe are like, oh, that's heretical. And if you don't repent of that, you need to die. And so they're persecuted, and that's where we have the stoning of Stephen as the first martyr of the church. So then it just kind of goes from there, because, because just like what I was saying before, with Pentecost, all those people go home. Well, they're going home with a very unpopular message. A message of hope that some will gravitate to. But then others are saying, oh, wow, you just came back from Jerusalem, a heretic. We need to kick you out of here. And so then thus begins the persecution of believing Christians all over. So almost immediately from them getting home. So just in the same way that we're saying, oh, yeah, that's where, you know, Christianity was spreading, or a messianic Judaism. But then that's also where persecution was spreading as well. And so then it just kind of continues to ramp up. And as they're taking Gentile converts now, it just ramps up even more. And so you have persecution from the Jewish population first. Because this is kind of an internal discussion or argument within Judaism. You have messianic Judaism and Judaism. And so then that becomes an issue, but then more Gentiles are coming into this. And so then it becomes less Jewish. Until by, I mean, 50, 75 years later, it's pretty much a Gentile product. So, but then you, that's when it's really taking on the flavor of like anti, you know, it's, they become known as atheists, and it's anti-Roman society, and all these other things. And so that's where Rome starts persecuting them as well. First, they were just persecuting them because the Jews were upset. And that was enough to stir everybody up, and we're like, all right, we need to, we need to settle this, because we have all these pockets, right? But then Rome is now coming down, they were like, we just need to squash this. But the more they tried, the more it spread, and so. That is such a rough generalization of the first couple hundred years of church history. But in a nutshell. Mike, anything to add to that?
Well, actually, yeah, there is, but it's actually bringing it to current day. We were with a taxi driver in Israel in October, and we started talking about the fact that we were Christians, and he was a Jew. And he said, "That means we cannot be friends."
Oh!
People think that we can be friends, but in reality, we cannot. The idea of you having Jesus as a Messiah is blasphemous.
Blasphemous, right. Wow, man. Those are ears that wouldn't hear, that's right.
And he did not get a tip.
She weren't friends. Oh, man, wow. No, hey, but modern day, because that is, I mean, what has been fostered over the last 2,000 years. And mind you, like, the church has not been nice to Judaism either. Especially throughout Europe, and so, yeah. But that is kind of the nature of persecution, how that evolved, especially over the first 75 years.
Was that typical to all of churches?
Primarily, because, yeah, and kind of that goes back to the whole, like, mission mantra, to the Jew first and then to the Gentile. Because, remember, all the apostles were Jewish. And so here they are going out, and they are going to a synagogue first, because they're the people with at least two-thirds of Bible, right? And, and so sharing the good news from the scriptures, right? So if you ever wondered, why does Matthew quote the Old Testament so much? And why is the Old Testament quoted throughout the New Testament? Well, it's because basically, they were creating a Bible study for why Jesus is the Messiah. And if they were arguing anything for ethics, or, you know, how to live, and any moral, you know, commands, well, they got to go to the Bible for that, just like we do today. And so that is what leads to, yeah, I mean, that's to the Jew first, then to the Gentile. And so they're ministering, they're sharing the good news, and it's either received or not. So, yep.
I was just going to add that your explanation is why Paul is persecuted. Followers of Jesus.
Yes, absolutely, that, so.
He was a Jew, and he thought what he was doing was right.
Saul of Tarsus was a Jew, he thought he was doing right by trying to squash this heretical movement that had started. Absolutely. And so, and then that's the irony of it all, that he gets to be the one kind of leading that charge. And, you know, and mind you, like, there was already pockets of believers throughout the Mediterranean, but as he's going, he is just trying to really organize this and see that growth, and making disciples, and encourage continual disciple-making. And so, yeah, absolutely. So that's a great example, great point, yes. Absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, just informer system, you know, in Cuba, and there's numbers of countries around the world where that exists, right? And so what would daily life have looked like in Smyrna, or in some of these cities, where there was definite groups of people that wanted to see you arrested if they found out that you were a Christian? Even just for identifying as a Christian. Not even for maybe doing something, you know, that may or may not have been legal or illegal if they passed a law against Christian acts, but just even identifying as a Christian. And so if somebody heard that from so-and-so, and, oh, man. Right, oh, yeah, absolutely, yep. Because you're helping clean up the city. Yeah, so favors, and there would have been all kinds of incentives to turn somebody in. Yep, absolutely. Man, good stuff. Any other questions, any other thoughts?
Are you going to get into the 10 days?
Yep, we'll get there. We'll get there. So, um. Actually... Yeah, yeah, we'll get there. So, all right, verse 10. "Do not fear what you are about to suffer; behold, the devil is about to cast some of you into prison, so that you will be tested, and you will have tribulation for 10 days. Be faithful until death, and I will give you the crown of life." So this is the coming affliction under that heading. "So the church is told not to be afraid of what they are about to suffer. Jesus had counseled His disciples not to fear those who could kill the body, but not save the soul." Actually, let's go to Matthew, chapter 10, starting at verse 24. "A disciple is not above his teacher, nor a slave above his master. It is enough for the disciple that he become like his teacher, and the slave like his master. If they have called the head of the house Beelzebel, how much more will they malign the members of his household?" Beelzebel was the prince of demons. "Therefore do not fear them, for there is nothing concealed that will not be revealed, or hidden that will not be known. What I tell you in the darkness, speak in the light; and what you hear whispered in your ear, proclaim upon the house-stops. Do not fear those who kill the body, but are unable to kill the soul, but rather fear him who is able to destroy both soul and body in hell. Are not two sparrows sold for assent, and yet not one of them will fall to the ground, apart from your father; but the very hairs of your head are all numbered, so do not fear; you are more valuable than many sparrows. Therefore everyone who confesses me before men, I will also confess him before my Father, who is in heaven; but whoever denies me before men, I will also deny him before my Father, who is in heaven." I'm going to keep reading here. "Do not think that I came to bring peace on the earth; I did not come to bring peace, but a sword; for I came to set a man against his father, and a daughter against her mother, and a daughter-in-law against her mother-in-law; and a man's enemies will be the members of his household. He who loves father or mother more than me is not worthy of me; and he who loves son or daughter more than me is not worthy of me; and he who does not take his cross and follow after me is not worthy of me. He who has found his life will lose it, and he who has lost his life, for my sake, will find it." Wow. Man, sorry, just couldn't stop reading there. I thought it was all relevant, though. So that was Matthew, chapter 10, verses 24 through 39. So, "And Paul had warned that the godly would be persecuted." 2 Timothy, chapter 3, let's go there. And when, as we read this, just, one, we go back to Jesus's teaching, right? So Jesus had warned the disciples about this long before. But then also, as we're reading it in Paul's writings, it's a present reality for him that he's experiencing, and he's warning, and in this case, Timothy, his own disciple. So I know it's easy to kind of sometimes read Scripture as something like far off and aloof, or maybe just kind of in its own abstract form. But like, in that context, imagine Paul writing this letter as one who maybe is still has scars, or is, has wounds that are healing from a recent beating, or something like that. Maybe he's still got a cough from pneumonia that he had in a dungeon. And he's writing in, you know, or even dictating to a scribe, and coughing between, you know? And so it's just something to remember that this is real. This was recorded at a time of, that was actually experienced. So it's just not a creative story. So 2 Timothy, chapter 3. Starting at verse 10. "Now you follow my teaching, conduct, purpose, faith, patience, love, perseverance, persecutions and sufferings, such as happened to me at Antioch, at Iconium, and at Lystra; what persecutions I endured, and out of them all the Lord rescued me. Out of them all, the Lord rescued me. Indeed, all who desire to live godly in Christ Jesus will be persecuted; but evil men and impostors will proceed from bad to worse, deceiving and being deceived. You, however, continue in the things you have learned and become convinced of, knowing from whom you have learned them, and that from childhood you have known the sacred writings, which are able to give you the wisdom that leads to salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus. All Scripture is inspired by God, and profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, for training, and righteousness, so that the man of God may be adequate, equipped, for every good work." So that's what we were talking about before. So Paul, obviously, they're speaking of the Old Testament. That was the scriptures that Timothy had from his youth. There wouldn't have been any others. If you want to make that retroactive, it's up to you. It's between you and the Lord. All right. "Yet as the time approached, believers needed to be admonished, lest the threat of martyrdom would cause the faint-hearted to relinquish their hold on Christ. They must recognize that while the persecution would be carried out by Roman authorities, it was in reality the devil himself who was responsible for their plight. He is the one who would try their faith through imprisonment and tribulation. Most commentators note that in the ancient world, prison was a place where the accused awaited execution." Acts, chapter 16, verse 23, and 2 Corinthians 11:23 would suggest that it also served as a place of temporary confinement and punishment. We see that in Paul's case. "Believers at Smyrna, or at least some of them, are to suffer persecution for 10 days, or, in alternative translation, within 10 days." Does any of your Bible say that, within 10 days? Just curious. For 10 days, yeah, that's what I think most translations have, just curious. "Opinions vary about the time intended. Most view the 10 days as a round number indicating a short period of time; but others hold it to be a prolonged, but definitely limited, period." So it could be like an actual 10 days, or that it was just a set period of time. Might not have been 10, but it would be relatively short compared to years of torture. Now, how that 10, those 10 days end, well, yeah. "So the latter interpretation is more in keeping with the seriousness of the impending crisis. The church is to continue faithful, even though it may lead to death. The reward for faithfulness is the crown of life; that is, the crown that is life itself. It is not the royal crown, the diadem, that is promised, but the wreath or garland, the stephanos, that was awarded to the victor at the games. Its value lay not in itself, but in what it symbolized." That's good, isn't it? That's awesome. That was from Mount's. So you have the diadem, which is the royal crown, but that's not what's talked about here. This is the crown of life, this is the stephanos, the wreath or garland. So does everybody know what we're talking about? Think of like the olive, or the, like, ivy or olive branch that would be wrapped around, and usually kind of comes around to here. So its value lay not in itself, but in what it symbolized, so this was the victor, right? And so this is kind of the ideal, like, this symbolizes the overcomer, right? I mean, but they didn't overcome their persecutor. They basically overcame themselves and stayed faithful to the Lord. I think as I get older, the more I study, man, there's a lot about self-discipline and self-control. I don't, anybody else feel that? Let's see, according to Pausanias, Smyrna was famous for its games. With others, Bruce, F.F. Bruce, thinks that the imagery is suggested by the circle of colonnaded buildings on the crest of Mount Pagos, called the Crown of Smyrna. So there's a couple other, like, links there. So even though it's the stephanos, that's the word that's used, there was other imagery, like, in the city itself, that looked like a crown. So once again, as this is being communicated to John, there is intimate knowledge of the city, and of the people, and what they're going through. And I think that, like, we're gonna see this in a few other letters as well. And what it should do is, one, for us, so far removed from that location and from that time, what it is, is it's an intimate knowledge of the area and of the people. And that if Jesus were to send a letter to us today, like, what would that say? Would it have something about architecture? Would it have something about engines? Would it have, you know, whatever it might be, that like, you know, to another city, it might just be like, oh, that's kind of silly? Or maybe they would just read it on the surface, and like, oh, that's neat, yeah, the victor's crown and everything. But then, for somebody who lives here, who knows the city, who knows the church here, be like, oh, wow. Wow, what a cool connection Jesus just made. Like, that, that really resonates with who we are. He knows this place. I mean, you know, Jesus writes a letter, makes reference to Becker's Drive-In, or, you know, whatever it might have been, you know, something that maybe like, you know, you've known from the past, and it's like, oh, yeah, okay, that's, that's pretty neat. So that's kind of what we're seeing here in some of these examples, is that Jesus has, and, and I think that's part of that reassurance, right? That the Lord is reassuring his people in this city that are about to go through persecution and suffer martyrdom, he wants them to know that he sees them, that he's there with them, he knows. And that he is calling them to stay faithful, regardless of what happens, and regardless of how bad it gets. Right. Oh, no, that is absolutely where we're going with that. So, so starting out, we were talking about Myrrh, that Smyrna in its, you know, root form might, the, the word, the city name possibly came from the word Myrrh, and because it was an export there. And so that's, yeah, Myrrh used in abomination, and, and, you know, death, you know, rituals and everything else. It's, it is interesting, and I don't think that's accidental. So, yeah, any, any questions? Alright, "So the call to listen and the challenge to overcome. He who has an ear," verse 11, "he who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches; he who overcomes will not be hurt by the second death." The call to hear what the Spirit says to the churches is repeated. Overcomers are promised that they will not in any way, so we have a strong double negative in the Greek. They will not in any way be hurt by the second death. So in Revelation, chapter 20, verse 14, it's identified as the lake of fire. And in 21:8, as the final lot of the cowardly, the unbelieving, the vile, et cetera, "over the faithful, who share in the first resurrection, it has no power." So let's go ahead and go to Revelation, chapter 20. Let's see, starting, verse 14, "Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire; this is the second death, the lake of fire. And if anyone's name was not found written in the book of life, he was thrown into the lake of fire." And then going on, turning over to chapter 21, verse 8. Actually, I'm gonna back up to seven. "He who overcomes will inherit these things, and I will be his God, and he will be my Son; but for the cowardly, and unbelieving, and abominable, and murderers, and immoral persons, and sorcerers, and idolaters, and all liars, their part will be in the lake that burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death." So twice here, we have the second death identified. And so to go back, verse 11, chapter 2, "He who overcomes will not be hurt by the second death." So here we have that connection, once again, to the end, right? He who has an ear, there's a connection to the end, some of the imagery later in Revelation. Just as the intro, we have connection back to the description of Jesus in chapter 1. Here at the end, he who has an ear, there's a connection to later on in Revelation, some of that language. For Ephesus, we had the Tree of Life that was referenced. Here, for Smyrna, we have the second death being referenced. Absolutely, and I think that's, that's important, as all of these letters are being read in all of the cities. And then how far does those get passed around to maybe the surrounding area? Or somebody super excited, and they take it down to Alexandria in Egypt, or whatever. But, yeah, they can read this and be encouraged by it. Absolutely. They can be challenged by it. If one of the warnings, right, repent and do as you did at first, and, you know, well, if I'm reading that, at first, I'm gonna be like, well, what were they doing in Ephesus? You know, I want to find out more, because, well, it's got my attention. What do I need to repent of, right? And then, even as talking, you know, for Smyrna, like, if I'm currently living in a time where there wasn't persecution, but yet I see dad walking around with one arm, or an eye out, or scars all over his body, be like, wow, am I ready to endure that? Like, just a reminder that this could be coming back around. Maybe not tomorrow, but maybe a decade from now. A new ruler over the city, and all of a sudden, things go south. You know, and so, so, yeah, I think absolutely, as these are being circulated, there's enough in there to, I mean, we're reading it 2,000 years later on the other side of the world, and we're being challenged by it, you know? And I think that's how much more for them who, 20 miles away, 30 miles away, and how, how quickly does that influence, does that persecution in Smyrna spread to another city? You know, maybe the Jewish population who, who's maybe leading this charge is like, hey, we're pretty successful here. Let's go to Pergamum. Let's go to Ephesus, let's, let's really kind of stretch this. So, you know, I, yeah, absolutely, it's gonna be a challenge for all those believers then, just as it is a challenge for us today. Yep, yes. You know, do I think they got jealous of Smyrna in Philadelphia? You know, I, probably not of Smyrna. You know, like, just knowing what was coming, there's that part where you're like, oh, man, we would just be refined, just thrown into the fire. But then, nobody that's ever experienced that, or heard about that, or, you know, really wants that for their loved ones, or whatever. So, you know, I, I think at, at the, at the surface there, there'd be like, oh, man, why, why do we have to get called out for our weaknesses, or whatever? But then they're looking at like, oh, oh, wow, you know, and how much is there, like, that, that opportunity to show their faithfulness, their, that opportunity to overcome, like, wow. Receiving that challenge, so, yeah. Nope, I don't think you're missing anything at all, and I think that is, just like what we read from Matthew 10, denying Christ. Oh, yeah, the question is for, I don't even want to repeat the question, but why is this idea of, oh, he who overcomes will not be hurt by the second death? Basically, what it, what we're leading into is, what about those who don't overcome? What about those who do deny Christ? I'm not the judge, and I will throw another, I don't know, token on that one, because, like, I know what scripture says, and in a moment of weakness, like, what would that look like? But, you know, I, I think we have our directive in front of us. Is, don't, you know, regardless of what's happening, we don't deny Christ.
But even if you don't deny Christ, just in a moment of weakness, if you gave in to sin?
Well, and I think that, as we talk about, yeah, denying Christ, and then linking that with, like, giving in to sin, I think we're, two different things, but there's overlap there. But it's still a big enough deal. I think what we're talking about in the overcoming is not necessarily giving in to sin, but it's under that torture, under that persecution, denying Christ. And so, so that is why I think that second death, one, because these people are experiencing death, and just as we've talked about before, looking ahead to life eternal with the Lord, and here we kind of have the flip side of that, of the second death. And so while it might initially sound like a threat, it's also a, hey, you don't have anything to fear. There is absolutely nothing to fear going into judgment. So, yeah, and we will leave it at that tonight. Woo, man. So we will pick up next week with Pergamum. So I want to thank everybody for being here, and have a blessed week.